Call to order, please stand for pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 3 Hillsborough Township Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, public law, 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please, Michael.
Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Hestag.
Here.
Mr. Scovo.
Here.
Mr. Sarachi.
Here.
And Chair LaFon.
Here. We need to call those who aren't in absent.
Ms. Becarina, she's not here. Ms. Forrest is not here. And Mr. Delcor is not here.
Thank you. Our first order business, we have the disposition of minutes dated April 5, 2018. A copy is in your packet as a reminder.
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, Mr. Hestag, Mr. Wagner, and Mr. Scovo.
All right, I'll move to approve the April 5 minutes.
I'll second as Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Hestag.
Yes.
Mr. Scovo.
Yes.
And Chair LaFon.
Yes. Next is the disposition of minutes dated April 12. Again, another copy of this is in your packet.
Mr. Wagner, yourself, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Scovo.
Again, we'll move it. You have a second?
I will second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And roll call.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scovo.
Yes.
Chair LaFon.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Disposition of resolutions, there are none. Planning Board business, there is none. Special committee reports, no. Is there any business from the floor tonight that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, nor is there any ordinances, so we will scoot right along to our first public hearing. We are here to hear Apex Land Associates LLC, Apex Sports and Events, File 18 PB01 MSP, Block 175, Lot 23.01, formerly portion of Block 177, Lot 23.01, Mountain View Road. Applicant seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval, submission waiver for submitting a CIS, a tree mitigation waiver to construct a 2,009,795 square foot indoor athletic and recreation facility comprised of three connecting building components, one of 100,850 square feet hard shell main building, 86,400 square feet air-supported dome easterly structure, a 22,545 square foot air-supported structure to rear of property, three outdoor synthetic fields, parking, and associated stormwater on property governed by the provisions of the Bellmeat GSA redevelopment plan, and amended ordinance 2017-21 EC review 32618. Revised plans received for 2318, and this is a continued from April 5, 2018 without notice.
Mr. Chairman, let the record reflect, Mr. Delcor arrived at 7:33.
So let it be noted.
So am I.
And we will go to Counselor. It's your floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Alex Fisher, representing the applicant from Savo, Shaw, Gillespie, O'Grady, and Fisher in Somerville. Can you hear me?
Why don't you pull it, Michael, a little closer to you, I'm telling you it's far.
I know it's getting a little bit louder than everybody else's.
So at the last meeting, there were a number of questions regarding remediation, so this evening I have the project LSRP, Garth Llewellyn, who will go first. After that, we plan to have Eric Sullivan to do operations testimony, and then Gary Dean, projects traffic engineer for traffic testimony, then Phil Decker, the project architect for architectural and signage testimony, and finally, project planner Frank Banish will wrap everything up. If there are no questions for me, I'd like to have Mr. Llewellyn sworn.
Please bring him up.
Before you have Mr. Llewellyn sworn, Mr. Fisher, let the record reflect that we received from Mr. Sarachi a certification of absent board member examination of record eligibility to vote, which therefore allows him to participate in this evening's proceedings, and I believe we are receiving one from Mr. Delcor, is that correct? Yes, also, which will allow him to participate, which then allows you to now have a court for purposes of this application, so.
Okay. I'll just, one point of order before we, please, because there's a lot of people here, make sure we speak into the microphone, both our testimony and our question people, people coming up, and also, I'll reiterate, if people are questioning testimony, please keep it to the testimony that you just heard, and not for another person, so that we may speed this proceedings along. Mr. Fisher, please proceed.
Could I have Mr. Llewellyn sworn?
How's it going? Is Frank's testimony giving us truth, all truth, whatever truth he's saying?
I did.
Do you say it's fine?
My name is Garth Llewellyn, and I'm a principal at Appalachia Hydrogeologic and Environmental Consulting LLC out of Bridgewater, New Jersey.
Please have a seat.
Mr. Llewellyn, if you could give the board the benefit of your educational background?
Sure. I have a Bachelor of Science and Master of Science degrees in geosciences. I'm a board-certified professional geologist in Pennsylvania, and also a licensed site remediation professional in New Jersey, and I've been working in the environmental industry since 1999.
We'll accept your qualifications. Please proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman and board members. In response to the public's environmental questions in the April 5 Planning Board meeting concerning Apex, I'd like to discuss three main topics, including the environmental areas of concern being addressed, the site compounds or contaminants of concern, and then also the site remedial approach. And lastly, I'll follow up with any questions that the board may have, or the general public. So first, I'd like to take a look at the first exhibit, I guess it would be Exhibit 4.
A4.
And we had A4 now.
Is that, which one is that? Is that one that was already marked?
This one here.
Oh, no. Yeah. All right, we'll mark that as A4. If you could describe it for the record, please.
So A4 is basically the site layout and environmental areas of concern that apply to the portion that Apex is going to be acquiring, proposing to be acquired. So here we can see there's a variety of AOCs described here by ID. It's a little bit small, but you can see there's a rail yard area. There's also former underground storage tanks, former above-ground storage tanks, and a variety of other AOCs. Notably, these AOCs are actually being addressed by Somerset County. The only two that Apex will be responsible for are the rail yard area and also the historic fill slash DAP. So the rail yard area is actually denoted here in this grayish area. These are the actual rail lines, and the historic fill is essentially something that's ubiquitous across the entire site, so it's more or less everywhere. All right, so now we're going to go to the second exhibit.
That would be A5.
Yes.
All right, let's see, actually.
So this exhibit basically is a photo documentation of the various test pits that we advanced throughout the site. And so here you can see there's quite variability here, this is more residual natural soils, for example, at Test Pit 4. And then also you can see over here as well, TW13, also very natural-looking soils. Here you can see some varying degrees of what we call this historic fill. Just to give some description as to what these contaminants are, we call them PAHs for short, or polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and also metals. So probably a best layman example that I can give you is that if you go out into the parking lot and grab a handful of asphalt, that's essentially exactly what this stuff is. So, you know, in the realm of environmental media, this is not the worst stuff that you could, you know, come in contact with. So I just want to, you know, give you an idea as to what's present at this site. So this will be Exhibit A6. So basically, this site's being remediated with a combination of both what we call engineering and institutional controls. And so probably the most common engineering controls that we use are what's called capping. Essentially, these compounds, the real, you know, exposure danger to this is really ingestion, normal contact, and inhalation. And so one of the ways that we mitigate it is by actually placing a clean surface on top of those compounds. Notably, this site does not have any contaminated groundwater. Okay, so really, all we're mitigating is exposure to them via direct contact, so...
And just to clarify, these do not lead you into the groundwater, correct?
Correct. So these are some capping examples, and a cap essentially has a few main components to it. It has a, what we refer to as a barrier at the surface, and that's usually clean fill with a vegetative cover, oftentimes. Other times, it can be an actual unitary surface, so it could be, for example, an artificial turf field. So these schematics here show what we refer to as a barrier, in this case, would be a six-inch, and this is for a minimum capping requirement for a vegetated lawn area, which would be considered non-athletic. So that would be something like outside of the complex where there aren't any rigorous activities taking place. Below that is what we have a, what we call a buffer, and that's simply just another layer of clean material to separate an individual that's present at the surface from impacted material that may be below. And then what we have is a visible contaminant boundary marker. Essentially, what this is, is an indicator that we're actually approaching those compounds of concern, and that can range from either a geotextile fabric, or in some cases, it can actually be sort of a natural variation in the soil tone. So in other words, the soils around here in Hillsborough, they typically are a red-brown silt-clay matrix, very distinguishable from something that you would be bringing on site that would be clean. So basically, that gives an idea for a professional, if you're going out to the site and you happen to be eroding away that natural, that cap that's been engineered, that gives us an indication that we need to fix that. So that's what these indicate, and here's some variety of different diagrams. This is a utility pipe, for example, and there's about a foot of clean material on each side of this utility pipe. And then there's also other different considerations for, let's say, a play area where you'd want maybe a minimum thickness of two feet of clean material versus one foot. So these are all ways that we can mitigate the potential for exposure to the compounds of concern. The other is, we can also use fencing. By using fencing, you're actually limiting access to a certain area. So that's another engineering control that we can use. Beyond that, there's also institutional controls. So you could think of that as a, if I don't allow somebody to have an activity on a certain part of the property, then how are they having exposure to these compounds? And so you can actually write into, for example, a deed notice where you're saying, there will be no activity taking place in this portion of the property. So that is another means to remediate a site.
And are these conservative methods?
They are, actually. The methods that we're at, that we're using are what they call presumptive remedies. And what those are, DEP actually gives a cookbook of certain thicknesses and criteria that if you comply with, you actually don't even have to have preapproval for. You could actually build a school, a child daycare center on top of a site that uses these criteria.
And lastly, let me see, keep them up here.
This will be Exhibit A7.
Yeah. There we go. All right, good.
So A7 is basically a sort of a, a site rendering of this site, and we're going to kind of talk about these concepts of engineering, institutional controls, and exactly how this is protective of individuals that'll be, that'll be frequently, you know, frequenting the site. Essentially, what we have is the building itself, as well as the parking lot, and also turf fields. These are actually engineered structures, and you can imagine, once they're built on top of this media, you don't have any exposure to it. In other words, you're not going to be able to actually physically touch the ground, put it in your mouth, or inhale any type of dust that may be generated from it. So essentially, the remediation for the site is a nearly site-wide cap, combined with institutional controls, which would be inspections to make sure that the integrity of that cap is not compromised through time. So this is not sort of a one-and-done approach. It is a engineering plan that then gets inspected through time to make sure that it does comply with the regulations, and there is a rigorous process that DEP has put in place to make sure there's reporting required for this. The one exception for the cap is actually into the northeast, where Oxford Place is over in this general area over here. And really, the reason why we did that was at the suggestion of the Township Environmental Commission, where they said, "Look, you know, there are some residents in this area that may want some additional buffering for both visual and also sound." So what we would propose is basically to put in, or actually to leave in place, rather, the natural vegetation that's present in this portion of the property, in large part because there is no planned activity or use for it, and so it makes perfect sense to put in a engineered structure like a fence to restrict access, put in a deed notice, which is essentially an institutional control. All the engineering and institutional controls get summarized in this deed notice, get sent to the county, and so it actually restricts this property from essentially being used for anything that's unauthorized. This area here, in addition to have the fencing, we'd probably would have a semi-annual inspection to make sure that the integrity of that fence is maintained, and if at any point in the future we identify that it's being breached in some manner, then we would take, you know, every necessary precaution to make sure that it's fixed or modified, to make sure that the general public is not gaining access to this area. Now, just keep in mind as well that, you know, kind of rewind a little bit, the compounds of concern that we're talking about are essentially compounds that we find in asphalt. Okay, so this is not, you know, something that is immediately dangerous to life or health. The standards are really meant for an exposed duration of 30 years, times 225 days, times eight hours a day, and that's for non-residential standards. So these necessary engineering and institutional controls are definitely conservative and protective of human health and the environment. I know there was a prior question in the last meeting that asked, isn't the best approach to excavate? And the answer is no. That is certainly one option, but there are other options, such as this, that are definitely adequate. And with that...
Would the DEP find them all equally set as factory?
They do. In fact, the DEP actually will give final approval on this. So just to give you a little bit of an idea about the process that we go through, there's a remedial action work plan that actually gets submitted, and that kind of outlines all of these engineering controls, all the institutional controls. Then, the site build-out, there was moves forward. We would consider that the remedial action phase. Afterwards, there's a remedial action report, plus the deed notice that I spoke about earlier. That gets submitted to the county. Then those items get sent off to DEP, who then would issue a remedial action permit. Once that permit is issued back to us, then I can issue an REO, which is a response action outcome, which is essentially a letter stating that, you know, this site complies with all the rules and regulations of the DEP, and then thereafter, it can be opened. After that, it's not, it's not done. Like I mentioned, there are these inspections that are required, and so every two years there has to be what they call a biennial certification, which summarizes all the inspections by a professional. And again, what we're looking at is for, you know, making sure that the integrity of the cap is maintained, and also, you know, if there's any alterations, then we'll address them as well, and that's documented in that, in that permit certification.
All right. I have no further questions from Mr. Llewellyn, the board does.
If you could sit, have a seat there, please.
Sure.
I'll just ask, just as a, maybe to answer some questions, on the, all the areas that are not immediately covered with a building, parking lot, or field turf, grass areas, that is capped with fill?
Yes, that is, that is all certified clean fill material.
Right.
So regardless of whether this is an environmental site or not, you'd have the building structure, you have the parking area, you'd have the turf fields, all of that constitutes a cap.
Right.
And basically, we look at those specifications, make sure it meets the minimum. Aside from that, you'd have the areas around the buildings. These would be sort of the non-play lawn areas, which have a cap thickness of about a foot with vegetation on top, and then beneath that is what they call a demarcation layer, which is essentially that marker that says we're out of the clean fill material. And if you go to the right side here of the figure, that area would have two feet, and the reason being is that that's potentially going to have some more active sports taking place on it, and so in that instance, this would be better to have two feet of clean fill.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Yes? Okay.
I have a question.
Okay.
Can you outline the area that would be fenced in?
Sure. The area that'd be fenced in would be this red line that you see. I'm trying to trace it here.
Mm-hmm. And it would be totally enclosed all around?
It would be.
Okay, now, can that be disturbed to the point where you can add trees or add vegetation, or you're not allowed to touch it at all?
No, you could add trees.
Okay, now, if trees die or blow over or whatever, you can go back in and replace those?
Yeah, that would be, you know, any type of alteration to it, you know, DEP can be contacted for that. If there's a substantial alteration of the cap, then that would constitute a modification of the permit, but that's only if you have a, that would be like saying, and let's talk about the banked parking, for example. If you go in there and say, "Well, now I want to go in and put asphalt on that surface," that is a modification. That has to get applied for, DPS to approve it. They still have to be notified whenever you want to go in and make, you know, for example, if you need to fix a utility, for example, they need to be notified beforehand.
Okay. So just to be clear, the fenced area, nothing gets removed? Whatever contamination is there, it stays there?
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. White, anything? All right. I will take a motion to open to public.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. So we'll now open to questions on the testimony that Mr. Llewellyn just gave on the LSRP, and any of the testimony he gave on the cleanup and/or capping. We'll start on the left. Come on up. We'll let, you keep that one, and I'll let her use that one. Name, spell your last, and address, please.
My name is Sally Trianz. I am at 555 Mountain View Road, lifelong resident of the township, 45-year resident of Mountain View Road. I just would like to know, are trucks bringing in the clean fill, and how many trucks can we anticipate coming down the road to bring that fill in? And also, would they be coming from the western area of Mountain View Road, or would they access it off of Route 206?
Yeah, the answer is yes. Clean fill material would be brought in via trucks. In terms of the access areas, it would be wherever we're authorized to bring in clean fill, that's where we'll be bringing it in. I mean, I'm not...
I ask simply because with the remediation that has occurred in the past for the Mountain View Park, there's been a huge amount of truck traffic, and I just would like to know whether that's going to impact all the residents on Mountain View Road while it's occurring. Also, I think there's a weight limitation for certain areas, how it can and cannot come in.
Well, if there's a weight limitation on a certain road, the truck would not be allowed to go in that direction.
So we're assuming it's coming in off of Mount, not Mountain View and East Mountain, but 206, or we don't know yet?
Wherever we're authorized to bring it in, that's where we'll be bringing it in.
I don't...
Do you have any idea how many trucks would have to come in to fill in such a huge portion?
Exact numbers, no, but quite a few.
Quite a few?
Of course, that's a short-term thing. Once it's done, it's done, correct?
Yes. So, I mean, that would be something during, you know, not even, that'd be pre-construction phase.
Pre-construction.
So, right, so we'd be grading and bringing this material on to, you know, to put in that clean fill in the appropriate areas.
I'll just note that, as noted in the last hearing, this is subject to, unlike the county portion, this is subject to the township's ordinances on timing and time limitations for construction, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the left side? Okay, moving to the right side. Anyone? Please come up.
Louis Cox, COX, 69 Oxford Place. You mentioned that there's going to be a fence along the back. At the last meeting, we discussed the possibility of including a solid fence and a large fence line along the back of the property. That discussion was with the owner, and it seemed to be a positive indication that that would happen, and my question is, has that been put into the master plan at this point?
That's not really something that would go in a master plan. Is it going, I believe the owner did agree to do that, so, yes.
So that'll happen.
Well, the fencing that we're discussing is really just to block off the area that is going to be on the LSRP. The perimeter fence wouldn't be applied to this, so that would be maybe something that would come up that you could ask and confirm.
But I did believe, do believe that you would.
But I believe they were going to do that, correct?
At the prior hearing, so that does answer your question, yes.
And you mentioned noise pollution as well. Can I just ask, is the equipment that powers this large tent that's going in the back?
No, because it's not for, it's not for this testimony. It's LSRP testimony. Just, just come back...
You mentioned noise, that's why I'm asking.
Well, that's not, this is the LSRP. This is about the remediation, so that question, we're going to have a general manager come up, that would be at that time.
Can't wait. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Just a clarification, Mr. Chairman, on that fence, before we're all done, I think it would be good to get a clarification on the actual location and length of the fence that seems to be agreed to, but we're going to need to get that on paper at some point.
Yes, I agree. Name, please.
Certainly, Brian Jeniton. I'm a resident of Book Drive. How's it going? Very good. Just have a couple of quick questions.
Please stay close to the mic. You're a rock star.
Not really. So you had mentioned that you did some sample drillings.
We did.
About what percent of that property is represented with your samples?
Sure. Yeah, so let me go back to... So, we're going to go back to Exhibit A5, just to make some clarification. For historic fill material, we're actually not required to sample anything. We're actually required to characterize it, to a sufficient extent, and that's what the purpose of these test pits were. Also, it was also to, you know, analyze for the rail yard area, which actually came back perfectly clean. So just to give a summary of that, essentially, the county has taken out the rails, they've taken out the ballast, they've taken out the ties. And so, we went back in and sampled that. We had, you know, virtually clean, clean material. As far as the historic fill, it probably warrants understanding how it's distributed, and what caused it. Essentially, DAP, diffuse anthropogenic pollution in historic fill, in conjunction with this site, operations began in circa nineteen forty. You can imagine, there's a tremendous amount of activity with all the rail, trucks going onto the property. You have vehicle exhaust. And actually, DAP, believe it or not, these same compounds, you find them on residential properties next to major thoroughfares. So if we test near roads, that's where we'll find it there, too. What they require for us to do is just to characterize it. And because we're using a presumptive remedy where we're actually capping on top of it, again, there's no groundwork contamination. And so, you know, this sufficiently mitigates, you know, the exposure to those compounds.
Okay, but like, what percentage do you think you've gotten covered in regards to the land, like?
Wherever you have a...
Twenty percent of the land being represented with samples?
Wherever you have one of these dots, that's essentially a test pit. And so, what we do is we advance enough test pits to get a general understanding as to distribution. Now, what the army would do is they would move material from one location to another. And essentially, what, in effect, happens is this stuff gets spread all over the site. So oftentimes, people think of a spill as being something that, you know, this drum tipped over, impacted the soil, you can kind of scoop it up and remediate in that sense. This stuff is not localized whatsoever. In fact, it's over the entire site, and that's the whole purpose of doing the capping and engineering and institutional controls.
All right, so then, I'm going to guess that it's a small sample size, but it represents the whole. So then, my question then becomes, you're going to cap this whole area, which makes sense.
Yes.
You have to. You're also saying that you're going to deal with, like, the erosion. So then, my question becomes, when it comes to erosion, how is it that you're going to, like, you've got your layers?
Mm-hmm.
What if there's, like, a breach in the layer? Now, I'm assuming that, like, you're going to go in, you're going to recap that area again, right? Is that going to count for basically, and I don't mean to, like, jump into, like, the building part, but as you put in the building, how are you going to mitigate, basically, penetrating into the ground to put the structure in place? Then, are you going to cap around that section as well?
Well, actually, the building is the cap.
Okay.
So essentially, the building structure, there's a, the specifications for that are some base material, and on top of that is concrete slab.
Okay.
And there are specifications also for crawl spaces as well. So those are all part of that presumptive remedy package, you know, that I discussed before. But yes, the building is the cap, as is the parking lot, as is the turf fields, as is this area here, where there will be clean material brought on site, because it will be grass.
All right, and then, you're saying that if there's ever, like, an issue, tree falls, hurricane, what's your response time before cleaning that up? Ballpark, obviously, I'm not saying.
Right.
Hurricane's going to be the same thing as a tree falling down.
Right, there's dual responsibilities here. So it's, there's a responsibility to the property owner, obviously. If they see some type of breach, that's something that they need to draw attention to. There's also a semi-annual inspection by a professional, that we would be walking around the premises, looking for these signs, like, for example, the demarcation layers that we spoke about. That could be a geotextile fabric. In some cases, it could be that red-brown, you know, soil matrix that we talked about. So that would be, that would be like, this is really the ideal red-brown soil that I was referring to. So it's on a semi-annual basis for a professional. But for Apex, it's really on a day-to-day basis that they're looking at things. And for example, for these turf fields, you're not going to have a hole in the turf field, otherwise, you're not going to be able to play sports on it.
Right.
So you have to fix that immediately. So there's self-motivation here as well. In addition to that, there's, you know, all of these parking lots, well, you're not going to have a huge gaping hole in the asphalt that a car's going to fall into. That has to get patched up. So, and as far as the play area, that's one of the reasons for the two feet, is that, again, we're being more conservative when there's actual activities taking place on that piece of the property. In the area where there's an enclosure, where there's a fence, we're restricting access to that area, so there's virtually, there's no exposure to it. And just for the record, we would be inspecting that fence as well for integrity. So if somebody is trying to break into it, then it's our responsibility to make sure that it's fixed. And if it warrants it, add additional security to it to make sure it doesn't get breached again.
Okay. Final question, for all these inspections, we've got chairman, we've got committee members for our town, they work hard. Are they going to be able to have access to those inspections? Meaning, you guys have your professional, you're inspecting. Is the town going to have access to that? Because, you know...
Everything that we do, everything that we do is accessible to, from Oprah.
It's a public record with DEP, right?
It's public records. So you can, you can write to DEP, say, I want all the records for this site. And you can see every report that's submitted for it. In fact, you can do that now. You know, there's a whole host of different, you know, environmental firms that have actually done work on this property. On an ongoing basis, if you want to check up on what's been done, you have every right to do that.
Okay, great. Uh, thanks, I'm sorry I was long, but...
No problem.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and that's it. All right, next witness?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Llewellyn.
Thank you.
Next, I'd like to have Eric Sullivan come up for operations. If I could have Mr. Sullivan sworn?
Sure. Please stand and right hand up.
First, this is my deep class, true question, Mr. Sullivan. Yes? Eric Sullivan, S-U-L-L-I-V-A-N.
All right. Mr. Sullivan, if you could provide some background about your experience in operating these facilities, and educational background as well?
Absolutely. I have undergraduate degree in marketing, MBA in international business, certified arena operator, fifteen-plus years of operations experience, and have served as a key witness testimony for a number of other projects.
You said you've provided testimony on similar facilities before more than twenty-five boards and commissions?
Yes, sir.
And you manage, how many of these types of facilities do you manage full-time?
We have twenty-seven active client accounts for SFM, sixteen of which are full-time management assets.
And you present at ten to fifteen trade shows on these types of facilities every year?
Yes, sir.
I would like to have Mr. Sullivan qualified as an expert in the field of sports and events facilities management.
Well, accepted, thank you.
I just have one question to start. Can you describe your relationship to the project? Will you be managing this site, or are you an outside consultant brought in to talk about operations in general?
Yes, sir. We will be the full-time management company of the site.
You will be, yeah, thank you.
You want to give a little background on the project history, and then go through how this facility will work?
Absolutely. So if I may, I'll share a little bit about our company, our history with the project. We'll talk about a day and the life of the operations, and then also respond to some operational questions that have been brought up. Just a little bit about our company, again, SFA Sports Facilities Advisory. We were founded in two thousand and three. We started providing management services in two thousand and six, formally broke out SFM in two thousand and fourteen. We began our work on this project with Greg Wilkey and the Apex team, with a formal feasibility study, where we analyzed the market, we looked at the influence of competition, and essentially assessed the demand for, need for sports, recreation events in the Hillsborough market. And I quantified that through a detailed pro forma, and came to the conclusion that there was sufficient demand, that this project was feasible. And when we began to look at the programming opportunities, both in physical structure and operational. Since that time, we've helped come to the design and the site plan that you see here before you, that we'll talk through in more detail. And as I shared before, SFM, our operations division, is the intended full-time management company for this operation. So what that means is, we hire the staff, we train the staff, we're essentially responsible for day-to-day execution of the business plan on behalf of Apex ownership. As far as the day and the life of the facility goes, I'm going to talk about the actual site itself, and how the site functions, and how the facility itself functions. So I'm going to start by bringing back up A7, the site plan. One of these things that, one of the things that we find most important when we work with these types of projects, is how the project is actually going to function from a day-to-day perspective. And it's all about the guest experience. So starting from the outside in, the first thing that you'll note is, we have ample parking for the facility, two points of entrance, so that when we bring guests on-site for both regular weekly programming and events, we have two points of access, with the main point into the entry building, here in the center of the front of the site. From the outdoor perspective, these three fields right now show a soccer orientation from the striping plan that's on them. We actually consider them multi-purpose long fields, is what we call them. And that means that we can use them for not only soccer, but certainly lacrosse, football, field hockey, ultimate frisbee, a number of other different sport and recreational uses. In addition to the outdoor turf fields that you see here on the left side of the plan, we also have green grass, open lawn areas. Those are currently proposed just to serve as warm-up areas. There's no specific intended use for those spaces right now in the lawn. Right now, what that is, is really giving players the opportunity to not be near the commotion of the games that are taking place, but warm up, cool down, have your coaches talk, things of that nature, before and after your event. When we look at the programming from an indoor perspective, I'll start at the right of the plan and work our way over. The first thing that you'll note is the hundred thousand, excuse me, the eighty-six-thousand four hundred square foot air-supported dome structure. So if I may, to get into more detail, I'm going to bring up a floor plan.
We'll mark that as Exhibit A8.
All right, so if we go back to the entry procession, this is the main door that I referenced coming from the parking lot. If we come into the facility and make a right, we go through a series of airlock doors here that take you into the air-supported structure. What you can see here, shaded into the facility, is we've got some different programming options. Right now, similar to the outdoor, we're showing a soccer field representation, but we can also use this for the other multi-surface turf sports that I mentioned before. You can also see that we have two baseball infield's shaded into this drawing, which means that in addition to the outdoor fields that are already on the campus for resident use and for team use and team play, we'll also have weatherproof indoor training for infield and for youth league modified games. For the air-supported structure, anything that needs to come into this that is oversized equipment related to benches, bleachers, goals, things of that nature, it would come through this back access through a airlock loading dock for the eighty-six thousand square foot dome. If we go past the airlock to the second dome, the second air-supported structure, just over twenty-two thousand square feet, this is primarily set up for our team training. So in addition to the infield's that we have here for baseball and for softball training, we have batting cages and pitching tunnels, where we can work on, obviously, both the offensive and defensive aspects of the game. And then we also have an open turf training area, which we'll use for what they call, like, SAQ-type training, speed, agility, quickness, infield training, that sort of thing. If we come back to the main building, and we focus on the hard structure, this is really the heart of the campus from the standpoint of the operational uses and the different ways to engage the guest experience. So as we come through the main doors here, there will be the opportunity to come out into two large programming areas. What you see in those areas is that you have four full-size basketball courts. So when we say full-size, we're talking eighty-four by fifty, so that's regulation for high school use, AAU, and a number of other types of sanctioning tournaments and events. Then we also have volleyball courts that run across the basketball courts, and we have a total of ten. So when we think about leagues, camps, clinics, tournaments, we'll be able to set the gym up either to have basketball on one side, we'll have volleyball on the other side, as well as a whole host of other. We actually have twenty-six different programming opportunities, from things like cheer, dance, martial arts, wrestling, band practice, you name it. There's all sorts of different things that we can do in this open programming space. If you come back towards the main entrance here, there's really two unique play features that we're excited about when you come into the space. One is an aerial obstacle, high-challenge ropes course. This is where we can do things like after-school programs, team building, leadership, birthday parties, and then also a play structure for kids of all ages, that has some different parkour elements, things you see like the American Ninja Warrior-type training atmosphere, so that in addition to traditional sports, we'll also just have active play, active recreation opportunities for kids as well. Kids and adults, I should say. If you go past the two interactive play areas, we have a full-scale rock climbing gym. So right now, what we're showing is that this space will have both bouldering, which is unharnessed, low-climbing elements, and also top rope elements and self-belay elements, that we can have a full climbing experience in the facility. And then as we move past the climbing area, what we're looking at is an interactive family recreation space. So we think about things like golf simulators, active recreational play-type opportunities. This is the area that we're looking to program that with. Come back to the core of the facility, we have a cafe for quick-order food service. I think something that's important to note is the cafe area that we have in here is really just for an onsite guest amenity. So if you're here for the turf fields, or if you're here for the indoor court space, or any recreation activities, you can grab a refreshment, you can grab something to eat or drink before or after your game. And as part of the experience, we also have an outdoor seating area for nice weather days, nice weather months, like what we're having outside here today. Attached to it, we have some multi-purpose rooms. These are really to host just different functions. So again, if we want to have coaches talk, if we want to have a nutritionalist come in and just speak to kids about what they should be fueling their bodies with, if we want to have some meetings, small-scale birthday parties, things of that nature, certainly we can program that. Our corporate offices, here on the right side, we've got, downstairs is where the main quick service and prep area is. Through this spine here, what we're proposing is that we'll actually have an elevated viewing mezzanine, excuse me. So what we'll have up there is comfortable seating, we'll have Wi-Fi access, really an opportunity for parents, spectators, to gain elevated viewing of the areas, and also just have a comfortable place to enjoy the environment. Last but not least, from the standpoint of the indoor spaces, one of the things that you'll notice is we've got some really functional storage built in throughout the facility in different pockets. And the reason for that is, again, when we look at this from the multi-purpose appeal, we want to be able to be efficient in our operations, be able to change from one activity to the other, and not get stuck with just one programming modification. So, some other operational questions or considerations that came up related to staffing from the pro forma and the organization chart that we put together, we're planning right now that we'll have five to six full-time employees on-site when we start to open. And then typically, while the facility's in operations, we'll have anywhere from five to twenty-five part-time staff members. Those part-time staff members could be anything from working at the cafe, helping with some of the, you know, quick-order type food, to referees, coaches, officials, that sort of thing, just to help promote the overall guest experience. The question also came up related to deliveries. So, one of the things I'd like to pull up is the site plan here. Thanks. This is, again, referencing A7 that we had up here earlier. If you look at A7, as a request from the board, last time we were here, was to have a designated loading area. So we have put in a loading area where we can have our deliveries. From the standpoint of the deliveries, we're looking at, these are usually panel truck deliveries, one to three times per week, it's for food, beverages. So in other words, you know, we'll have a... So in other words, you know, we'll have a Pepsi or Coke delivery, we'll have a food delivery, we'll have FedEx, UPS-type delivery for office supplies and things of that nature. But that typically happens one to three times per week. In the rare event that we do have a larger equipment delivery, one to two times a year maybe, that could come in an eighteen-wheeler-type setup. And if that is the case, when that happens, because it's so, the exception, not the rule, if you will, we would schedule that for delivery during non-open hours. Last but not least, just as far as pickup, the question came up related to trash and recycling, which typically we see picked up two times per week. Related to hours of operation, typically speaking, we see the overall hours of operation from eight AM to eleven PM for both indoor/outdoor programming. One of the things that is the natural, I guess, the nature of the business rather, is that primarily evenings and weekends are busiest times. So when parents are out of school, excuse me, parents are out of work, kids are out of school, that's when we see our heaviest usage. So really those peak times during the week from four to nine PM are really the peak traffic times. And then on the weekends, again, from eight AM to nine PM. One of the other questions that came up related to the lighting of the, of the dome, rather, was does the dome emit light or does it glow? One of the things that I can attest to from multiple facilities that we run where we have air-supported structures is they do not glow. What we have is it's a three opaque-layer construction. There's an outer vinyl layer, there's an internal sandwich of a radiant barrier with two layers of insulation, then an internal vinyl layer covering that, that creates the actual structure of the air-supported dome building. The other thing that we touched upon is unlike a dome that is used for tennis, where you have uplighting so you can see the ball up into the air, because we're focused on mostly field-based sports in the dome area, they are downcast lighting. So again, to further, the dome is not being lit up, it does not glow or emit light. One of the other questions that came up related to our emergency and operational plans is what our protocol is. And so one of the things that we take very seriously because of our network of facilities and because our mission is to impact the communities we serve in a positive way, both economically and from a health perspective, we want to keep kids, we want to keep families safe. So from the standpoint of, we work very actively, not only with local officials and emergency responders, but also at the national level. National Recreation and Parks Association puts out some very stringent guidelines as far as what you do from a hiring best practices standpoint, emergency safety procedures, first aid response procedures. Even right down now, unfortunately, we have to have things like active shooter procedures. And we cover all of those types of emergency plans. And we also have, as part of our management service, we have an umbrella suite of insurance through Safehold. Safehold comes on by semiannually to do a full risk mitigation walkthrough to make sure we're compliant wherever we think we are, that we're up to date with both emergency responses, protocol signage, and equipment. Last but not least, from the standpoint of access to anyone that could be injured during the time of play, what we find is really the best practice is just having open communication with our first responders. So whether it be, you know, EMT, police, fire, just making sure that they have a good understanding of the building, over-communicate where the incident may be taking place, and then make sure that we can safely and efficiently attend to that individual. From that perspective, happy to answer any questions related to the operation of the facility.
Dave, you have anything? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question about parking, and you may be able to answer this, the traffic engineer might. But based on your experience with other facilities of this size, and I'll quote the redevelopment plan, and we touched on this at the last hearing somewhat. The plan allows for up to twenty percent of the total number of parking spaces to be banked, which is shown on the plan, which is fine. If the applicant can demonstrate to the planning board that not all of the required spaces are needed at this point in time, in your experience with facilities of this size, are your parking lots ever full? Are they, are they a lot of surplus space? What's your experience?
It's a good question. So what we target when we look at new facilities from a planning standpoint, the average we typically look at is three spaces per thousand square feet. For this facility, with the bank parking, we're providing four spaces per thousand square feet. And if you look at our network of facilities, the average that we have is two-point-eight spaces per thousand square feet. So from that standpoint, do we have times where during peak traffic we have, you know, steady, full parking lots? Yes, absolutely, but to account for that, in Apex, we've actually built above what we typically do to account for the additional traffic.
So without the bank parking being provided at the moment, you feel operationally you'd have enough parking to satisfy your, your highest demand?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Tom?
That's it.
Mr. White, do you have anything?
You spoke about events, what would be the largest event that this facility could handle? And how many people do you anticipate, as well as cars?
It's a good question. So I'll, I'll address it as far as the number of people and the event spaces, and then I'll let the traffic expert address the number of cars. If we were to look at this from a, a max-use capacity, I'm going to go back to the floor plan here. Actually, I'll stick with the site plan because I think it's important to understand the outdoor fields as well. If you were to look at max-capacity for an event day, that's when we're running a tournament outside and tournaments inside. So we would have teams on these three fields, in the courts, in the dome. Our maximum daily number of calculation is between five thousand and fifty-five hundred people over the course of a fourteen-hour day. If it's a non-event day where we're not running tournaments and it's league play, training, and just normal weekly programming, we're at four thousand to forty-five hundred people max per day. Again, assuming a fourteen-hour day, such as a Saturday, all-day programming. As far as the number of cars that that equates to, I'll let the traffic expert discuss.
So obviously, you're, and I'll just pick, so on your max numbers there, that's obviously turnover of people coming in and going?
That's correct.
What is the max capacity of the, I guess, the fire marshal would allow in the building at one time?
The max capacity of the fire marshal, not a hundred percent sure what the fire marshal would say, what our calculations have shown is that the max would be, would be, if we had about three hundred people in the facility, would be what we're looking at as average. I don't know if that specifically answers your question, but three hundred people would be the average.
Okay, and the hours you kind of wrote, so Monday to Friday, you're eight to eleven, and on Saturdays and Sundays, you're eight to nine, is that?
Eight to eleven, eight to nine is the peak.
Oh, peak, so eight to eleven, seven days a week.
That's correct, with the peak during the week being, again, four to nine.
Just didn't know I heard that right. Any other questions?
Yeah, I know a couple of questions came up, one at the environmental commission and I guess also probably here. So just maybe we can address the, obviously, there's a power need to, to maintain the, the, the air-controlled buildings. Can you talk about one, sort of the power generation needed to, to maintain the domes and what happens from a redundant power standpoint if you, for generators or whatever else, in case power goes out? Or is there someone else?
I'm going to default to construction for that. I know how to operate it, that's above my level.
Anyone else? Question? Okay, we'll open to public on this testimony. We'll start again on the left side. Anyone for the testimony that Mr. Sullivan gave, please come up. Name, spell the last name, please, and address.
Hi, I'm Jean Trillo, T-R-U-J-I-L-L-O, Eric Court in Hillsborough. So I have to read my disclaimer. I'm a member of the school board, Hillsborough Township School Board. The opinions expressed here are my own. They are neither authorized by, nor do they express the opinions or views of the Hillsborough Township School Board. So I have a question for you regarding the kinds of sports that are going to play in the facility. You said soccer, baseball, et cetera. Are you expecting this to be Hillsborough-based teams? Or are these from outside of Hillsborough? The reason I ask is because Hillsborough Soccer Club, I believe, is a nonprofit, so is Lacrosse, Junior Raiders, they're all nonprofits. So I'm curious to know about the pricing to sustain the facility? Like, how is that going to work?
The radius of influence for the facility is a thirty to forty-five minute drive time for regular reoccurring programming. It would be up to a four to six hour drive time if it was a tournament or event.
Wait, I'm sorry, say it again?
Thirty-five to forty-five minute radius of influence, so if thirty-five minute drive time to the facility. If it's a tournament, we'd expect people to drive from four to six hours, up to four to six hours for a tournament. That would be happening on a Saturday or Sunday, and the pricing is based on a local market pricing index.
So you're expecting the majority of your business to come from out of Hillsborough?
No, within thirty to forty-five minutes' drive time of the facility. So the majority of that would fall within Hillsborough.
So Hillsborough is maybe like fifteen minutes radius drive time, or no, you're expecting it to be larger?
Thirty-five to forty-five minute radius of influence is where the people that will draw for weekly programming.
Right, so my question is, when you drive thirty-five minutes, you're like in Princeton, you're in...
Sure.
So you're expecting to draw more from outside of Hillsborough, or?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay.
The thirty-five minute radius of influence is a one-way drive time from the facility. So if you put a dot in a map, and then you had a compass, and you drew around thirty-five minute radius of influence drive time, that would be the core programming area. And based on the proximity of this facility in Hillsborough, that would encompass all of the area of Hillsborough.
I would just ask what relevance this has to the board's consideration of whether or not this meets the site plan ordinance?
I was just curious, because you mentioned the sports that would be influenced by this, that would be able to participate. So I was just curious as to what sports you were targeting, because the sports that are in Hillsborough tend to be, as far as I know, I mean, could be wrong, that they're all like nonprofits. So concern is that if you build a facility that is going through, like, I guess, they have a five-year pilot, that if it cannot sustain, is that not the right time to ask this question?
I mean, I think it's, it's totally irrelevant to, to the question of whether or not it meets the site plan ordinance.
But now, my question is, but this is operations? Do you know where I'm going at, or am I not, I'm not being clear?
Well, I just don't see how questions about the pilot and, you know, where people might come from have to do with the site plan application.
That's related to the business plan, not the site plan, I think is what you were asking.
So is the, is there a time to ask about the business plan, or is that time passed?
Well, I'm happy to share that, you know, from a field sport perspective, football, soccer, diamonds, baseball, softball, things like ultimate frisbee, field hockey, all sports we would look to program. I think your concern about pricing is how do nonprofits work in that pricing mix? And what we did in the feasibility analysis is we looked at who are the participants in the radius of influence that I mentioned before? How are they currently registered to play? That could be parks and recreation, that could be school, that could be nonprofit, that could be competitive for-profit. When we look at the number of players that we're going to draw from, we'll have people from each of those different sport backgrounds and the different clubs and organizations. And what we've done is we've worked with organizations like the Junior Raiders to understand what their programming needs are, had conversations to understand how many fields they're using per hour, when they need them, what they're able to pay, and all of that's been taken into account in our business plan. So don't mean to avoid the question, we certainly plan on working with for-profit, nonprofit, park and rec, school-based programming, you name it, to make a facility like this work. It's really about everyone in the community. So the price index we've used is very competitive and affordable. And we've also talked with ownership about having Hillsborough and non-Hillsborough rates for certain programs as well.
All right, thank you.
Absolutely.
Anyone on the left side? Go ahead.
Hi, my name, my name is Doug Schaaf, seventy-nine Oxford Place. My concern is, or questions about the hours of the operation? What hours are they?
As I shared, the standard hours are eight AM to eleven PM. During the weekdays, the peak hours are four PM to nine PM. And during the weekends, eight AM to nine PM.
Will the fields that are here, will they be lit to eleven o'clock?
Yes, sir.
This is more of a comment, I guess, to the board. My concern is the lights and the impact that's going to have on our neighborhood. We have small children, we have babies, and I cannot understand how that would not impact our quality of life. We already have one neighbor who, one week after the last planning board meeting, has put their house up for sale. We've been there for over nineteen years. I don't think it's fair that we be forced out of our homes because of this business. So I guess what I would request is that this proposal is approved, that the lights not be approved with it. Or if you feel necessary to approve the lights, that there be some sort of limitation, that they shut off around one o'clock at night.
At what time did you say?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
Because again, we have small children, they go to bed, we have babies in the neighborhood.
Is your concern because of the county park? Is that where it's stemming from? Because you, because you think the lighting levels will be similar to what the county park is generating right now? Is that your concern?
We have that issue, I know, also.
Correct.
So we don't want to complicate it.
My understanding is that we've requested that they change the lighting, type of lighting to LED, as well as, it's not the same type of ball play. We're not, they're not looking to play baseball, they're looking to, on the field, to light up the field, not up the sky.
I understand that, but this gentleman just said, but they're talking about football. So initially, it was a cross in soccer, it's a ground sport, across maybe a little higher, you start talking football and kickoffs, and, you know, you're talking, you're talking a lot higher than we initially heard at the last planning board meeting. So again, whether these lights are up in the sky or just straight ahead or down, you're still going to see them from long ways away. And this is, this is a residential neighborhood.
I can say it's a permitted use, and this is, you know, the, the lights were provided on the plans. They don't, they are downward-facing, they're not changing from that. So they, in addition to that, they're, in the, the ordinance does not have a time limitation in it. And, you know, it, there's also no, no variance is being requested, this is not a use variance, so you don't have to justify the potential impact. And I think that, as you've seen from the other people trying to go above and beyond in providing extra trees, downward-facing lighting, cutting off times, providing extra fencing and buffering.
I, I understand all that, but if you're looking over here...
You need to take the microphone with you.
Looking over that one area, I, I don't see how trees are going to protect the light, because there aren't any trees there now, are there?
The, the simple fact is if an area is owned for something to exist, then the impact is expected from there. And, you know, we're still trying to, as you can hear from the testimony, trying to do, take reasonable steps. But cutting off lighting well before league's end is not something that the applicant could agree to, so.
I guess I would ask the board to take into consideration the homeowner's views. It may be an allotted use, but they're peak times are the times when we're home with our families. We're trying to enjoy our, our properties. It's not like it's an office park that's going to operate till six o'clock, seven o'clock at night. We've got lights that could be on till eleven o'clock at night. I'm sure Mr. Wilkie would not like lights being shined into his house where he lives. And in his name, we may be provided loose, but I'm sure he'd probably end up moving.
I think we're, we're heading into comment here, so.
Okay, so I mean, again, we appreciate it.
I think the question was, would we change it to nine? I think the answer was no, so.
So again, I'd just like to register that as a, as a concern.
Okay.
Is there anything that we can do as homeowners for that?
Well, the, how long are the lights on right now at the other fields? What is the hours on that? Do you know?
I don't think they go past ten.
It's not nine?
I know from experience, they do, they do go past ten. Some baseball games go till ten-thirty or beyond. But also, I know that when, when the game is over on some fields, the lights are turned off. So I would ask the question, you know, at some point, let's say, and there might be a safety reason not to turn them off, but if games aren't scheduled, could the lights on the particular fields be turned off?
Yeah, just from an operational cost consideration, if the field is not being used, it will not be lit. And once a game ends, the fields, the lighting for the field will be shut off, and then the parking lot lighting will help them get safely to their vehicles.
Okay, and just one other question, it might have been brought up last time. When the back field, which might be closer to the area that you were talking about, when that third field is, is set up or built, is it possible to have that as like the third option and not used unless it's needed? Like, if the other two fields are applicable for the games that are being scheduled, they would be used first as a priority, and the third would be used only if necessary?
Yeah, absolutely, we can make that a priority to program last.
Thank you.
So I guess I have one more question for the board, from the public's perception or perspective. If this fits the ordinance, the lighting there, is the, do we, the public have an ability to be able to change that ordinance? Is that a committee that we see, is it the board here that we see?
Well...
Let Mr. Burns answer that question.
It would require the township committee to change the ordinance relative to the lighting. It is within the board's purview to deal with the issue of the hours of operation.
So the process would be to start with the township committee?
As to the lighting, yes, to the assumption that the lighting will in fact create a drain or a, off of the property into the neighborhood, which at the moment, it's been the testimony of the parties, that it is not supposed to go beyond the purview of the neigh, of the property itself, unlike the Park at Mountain View where I believe there is no such requirement.
Again, I don't think there's any barrier on that third field between that and our neighborhood, our backyards. We have some trees on the, on the first, where the facility is, but when you get to that last field that approaches the, the neighborhood, I don't think there's a natural barrier there. I, I think the trees will be taken down by the GSA.
There's been testimony that there'll be zero-foot candles of light spillage at the property line. There's been testimony from the engineer that there'll be zero-foot candles of light spillage at the property line.
There, did you hear that? So the lights are designed, so at the property line, there'll be zero-foot candles of light spillage, meaning there'll be no detectable light at the border. Because the lights will be directly downward, so that when you're at the property line, if it's night out, you'll be in the dark.
So let me ask you this question, then. If that were not to be the case, when it was built, when this property or this project is built, if it's approved, what is our recourse?
Well, the property, it has to pass through the engineering and the inspections thereof, based on with our testimony.
And if the township found...
There's zoning requirements that we then have the, the ability, there's zoning then, that we have the ability, sir? Up here. There's zoning then, and we have the ability to, to control if there's, if they're not in compliance with the, with the aspects of, of their requirements within the zone.
So if there's an impact on the neighborhood from a light perspective, that it's not shining right down, and shining into our backyards and our homes, we have recourse through...
Depending upon what the approval is.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on the left side? Okay, now we'll move to the right. Anyone? Yep?
George Cox, sixty-nine Oxford Place. Just a question on the, the mechanical room for the, that powers this dome. Where is that?
We're actually going to have the architect testify to that, so he'll point out where it is and everything.
Well, the gentleman took the time, you know, to point out all the different rooms and stuff. So he, he gave direct testimony. I'm asking him a question, where the mechanical room is.
He'll be better answered by the architect.
So...
Is it indoor or outdoors?
Why don't we just wait, is, when is the architect coming up next?
After traffic.
After traffic, so he's coming up shortly, so. Is it, is it...
Is it indoor or outdoor? I mean, I...
Is it indoor or outdoor?
I don't think that's...
Outdoor.
Thank you.
Then you mentioned about noise pollution. The mechanical equipment that powers this ninety-foot balloon in the backyard is going to be outdoors. It's three o'clock in the morning, it's summertime, the windows are open.
Well, I think the question...
All the folks have gone home. Five thousand people have gone home for the day in your backyard. It's three o'clock, an outdoor mechanical...
But you're making an assumption that hasn't been testified to yet. So why don't you wait until they actually testify to what the noise levels will be, before you make that supposition? Because you're, you're assuming facts that aren't in evidence.
Well, I'm assuming it's going to make noise.
Well, but...
We don't know that.
The architect will address this directly, so if you give him a chance.
Okay. You mentioned also about the lights. If, if anybody has seen, or I encourage all of, all the members here, to stop on Oxford Place maybe on the way home tonight, and look at the lights three hundred yards away. And tell me what you see. Then I have you, I'd like you to imagine that moving up two hundred and fifty yards and being in your, in someone's backyard. I understand that light won't shine down, but believe me, at fifty yards, you'll be looking right into that LED light, and you'll see that light. And it will be an affront to your vision. From an operations perspective, you know, when you design and recommend locations for folks, is it an ideal location to be in a residential community where three sides of your property is going to be surrounding the property?
I would object in that you don't have to justify the location as it is a permitted use on the property. And that's, that would be a question for a use variance.
I didn't hear you say it.
It's not relevant, it's...
It's a variance, they're saying that they doesn't need a variance to be there, it's a permitted use.
So you don't have to justify...
Well, you know, it's my understanding that the variance that gets this here has been changed within the last couple of months. You know, I mean, it, you know, variances are put in for a reason, I suppose, and all of a sudden, we have a variance that allows this piece, this property to come into that location. And, and, you know, two months later, we have somebody, you know, taking advantage of that. It just, something's wrong here. You know, I, I think there are, you know, I don't, people should be allowed to make and have, make money on a business, but maybe there are more appropriate places in town to put it. You know, Health Quest, you know, is on Route thirty-one, you know, you know, from a, from a marketing perspective, I would think, you know...
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is completely...
You're not asking a question now.
They're not asking a question, so you're going to ask...
We're not, we're not at open mic now, so that you'll have a chance for open comment at the end, but right now, we're asking testimony.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else on the right, questions?
Gentlemen, Still Brian Jeniton, Still Brook Drive. How's it going?
Great.
Just a couple of questions, I promise I won't eat up a lot of time. Could you just give me a little bit more detail on how you determined that Hillsborough is going to be a good profitable space for you? Like, not that I'm accusing, like did the town speak to you and say, hey, we've got a great opportunity here, because this is a great town? Or did some citizens of the town come to you with a petition saying, listen, we like Apex, we love what you're about? Would you be willing to come, move in? So can you tell me how you determined that Hillsborough was, for lack of a better term, a target of opportunity for you for business?
We were hired to assess the feasibility of a multi-sport project here in Hillsborough Township. We looked at the project from the existing trade market area, the influence of competition, the number of participants in sports, as I mentioned before, talked to a number of local clubs and organizations. And this is the work that we have done on behalf of a number of projects across the country. And from the standpoint of assessing feasibility, what we came back with is that it was a viable market opportunity. We had a lack of facilities in the immediate area to serve the need. And from the standpoint of the business operation, what we found is that it is a financially viable endeavor here in Hillsborough Township.
All right. My next question is, and most of my, for this part would be more for the traffic study, so I'll just limit quite simply. Your two points of entry would be where? Because you did mention that as part of your plan.
I'm referencing Exhibit A seven. Here's one location, here's another location.
What road is that, do you know?
That's the entryway into the existing Mountain View Park.
Okay, and there?
That is Mountain View Road.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, it's, so you mentioned that there's going to be fifteen hours, you know, in regards to like your time of operation, yeah?
Yes, depending on the day of the week.
All right, respectfully. And that's five thousand people, it's a lot of people. So my question for you is this, you've operated a lot of facilities before.
That's correct.
In fact, sixteen, correct?
Currently.
Do they run the same amount of hours that you're proposing for this, or do you have like different hours, depending on like the need of the market, like...
So we have a diverse portfolio of facilities. I would say most of them run very similar hours. The hours of operation are typically based on the programming of the facility. So for this type of facility, it's very consistent with every facility we operate.
If you can't answer this, I totally respect it. Do you have a facility that this would be comparable to, so that if I decided I wanted to go visit it, I want to see what this is going to look like in Hillsborough, but somewhere else? Would you have an example?
Yes, I'd invite you to visit www.sportadvisory.com. You can look at our portfolio and travel to visit any of our facilities that we actively manage.
Okay, but like you don't have like one off the top, and I don't mean to badger, I don't, um, you don't have like one off the top of your head that, you know, this is going to look great in Hillsborough? Like there's none that comes to the top of your head that would be comparable?
There are several. To pick one that's specifically similar with indoor and outdoor programming, I'd send you to Spartanburg, South Carolina.
Okay. One more question. So you're going to basically work the field so that one and two get priority, one being the lowest, two being the middle, and three being the top field? Just out of curiosity, so you're going to use that third field sparingly, obviously if you need it for business purpose, you could. What if you decide that, you decide that you need that third field over the second?
Based on the request of the board, what was asked is, would we make that the third programming priority? And what we agreed to is that we would make that the third programming priority.
Okay. Follow-up being, let's say that you guys, you know, Apex decides to sell off this particular facility to another, could you guarantee that the next company that purchases?
That would be a condition of approval, so it would be required to run with the land.
Okay, and that was a concern. Sean, may I ask a quick question of you? Just out of curiosity, respectfully, is there a town ordinance for noise and light? Do we have one here?
Yes, there is.
Yes. Okay. That would be all, thank you.
Okay. No problem. Anyone else? For this testimony? Okay. Next witness.
Thank you.
You need a break?
Five-minute break.
You good? You all right? All right, we'll, we'll take a quick five-minute break, come back at nine o'clock. We're back in session, it's nine after nine. Your next, is this Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, I'll have Gary Dean testify regarding traffic.
Okay.
If I could have Mr. Dean sworn in.
Certainly, it's Gary Dean, D-E-A-N.
Mr. Dean, if you could give the, this board the benefit of your qualifications.
Certainly, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey, serving as a traffic engineering consultant, and in that capacity, over the past thirty-five years or so, I've appeared numerous times before this board, among other communities throughout New Jersey. In my capacity, in appearing before this board, I represented Beazer Homes in the subdivision that was approved some years ago on Pleasant View Road, but near the site. And more recently, I've been involved in other applications with Mr. Fisher along Valley Road, the Green Village apartment complex, among others.
We'll accept your qualifications, Mr. Dean.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If you want to go through your report and describe the traffic for the site.
Certainly. I, I've been working with the applicant on his other project, the HRC Fitness Center on Bauer Lane. And as part of the long-range effort to provide additional recreational elements in Hillsborough, this site became available after another site on Hillsborough Road was no longer considered viable. So we've been assisting Mr. Wilkie in his efforts to consider the traffic and parking elements for a variety of facilities. Also, by way of background, I've represented Health Quest and Emerald Sky. And, and for anyone who has familiarity with those facilities, they are analogous to a degree to this particular proposal in that they provide outdoor recreational components as well as an inflated structure for instructional sports and fitness-related activities. There's also another similar facility in Branchburg on Reddington Road, known as the Branchburg Sports Arena, that is roughly a sixty-eight thousand square foot building that has multipurpose indoor turf fields. Our firm has also been involved in other similar recreational components, the Bridgewater Sports Arena, and I think it's now known as Flemington Ice, but it has gone through a cycle of fitness centers and indoor racket clubs to now indoor soccer and related facilities. For this particular application, and just for identification purposes, we prepared a traffic impact study prepared by my office, Dolan and Dean Consulting Engineers, dated February first, two thousand and eighteen. Our report includes the typical elements in a traffic study, which is to first identify ambient or base traffic conditions in and around the subject site. That provides us a framework from which we can then project future traffic conditions. For this site, recognizing its use and its peak seasonal demand as a recreational facility, we conducted our traffic counts in mid-June of, of last year, before schools had let out for summer recess, but also in July, when the adjacent ball fields were busiest, of course, with, with recreational-related activity. We did so by performing manual counts, that is, having people at the intersection, in particular at Route two oh six and Mountain View Road, counting every individual car. But we also installed automated traffic recorders on Mountain View Road, so that we could identify longer range and daily traffic patterns. And just to share a few numbers, and I don't mean to be overly analytical, but we identified what I would characterize as relatively light traffic on Mountain View Road, that was slightly higher in the evening peak hour. And we did focus on evening rush hour, basically, as people are coming home in the evening, and then on Saturday at midday, when the facility itself would be busiest. The total two-way traffic on Mountain View Road during the evening peak hour, which was five fifteen to six fifteen, was a little less than four hundred vehicles per hour. Basically, two hundred and forty going toward Route two oh six, and roughly a hundred and fifty-three traveling west from two oh six on Mountain View Road. On Saturday, the, the traffic was about half, it was under two hundred vehicles per hour. By contrast, activity, as we all know, on Route two oh six is very busy, and there's basically two thousand in excess vehicles per hour at, at, along the highway. As you know, that the intersection of Route two oh six and Mountain View Road is controlled by a traffic signal. The DOT has recommenced work on the southern section of the Hillsborough bypass that we anticipate will be completed concurrent, virtually, with, with the opening of this facility. So the timing of these simultaneous projects is, is very fortuitous. As part of our analysis, we evaluated those operating conditions, and although this, the intersection is controlled with a signal, obviously movements on the highway are favored. DOT likes their highway to have more time, it obviously needs to accommodate more traffic. And as a result, the movements on Mountain View Road operate with longer delays, we would expect that, but at very favorable level of service D. And, and that's a function of the traffic signal timing. Movements on two oh six are much better at level of service B. And more for the public's edification, traffic engineers use this term "level of service" akin to a report card with A being the best operating condition or level of service, and F being a condition that's frequently characterized by stacking or queuing at a... Um, and obviously, the bypass project, which I'll discuss in a moment, is going to introduce more capacity, um, and affect that intersection operation, we believe, in a positive way. The next step in a traffic study is to then estimate how much traffic we could expect with the development of this facility. And, and in, although I did look and have the benefit of traffic studies at Health Quest and Emerald Sky and these other facilities, they did provide us some information. But in lieu of doing that, as we expect through this process and certainly with the public, it's the "what-if" question. What if every field is busy? And what if every field is busy at the same time, every court in the inside of the building is also busy? And what if those conditions simultaneously occur with birthday parties and martial arts instruction? I mean, literally maxing out the, the, the size of the facility in terms of its capacity. And working with Mr. Sullivan's office, the traffic projections we've included in our study are that very scenario. Literally using every square inch within the building to its design capacity. Not fire rating, that's different, but for the, having the freedom to throw a ball and kick a ball and participate in instructional activity. So in terms of traffic numbers, that type of, uh, activity during the evening peak hour could result in just over two hundred vehicles coming in at night and about a hundred and forty leaving. And obviously, as one game ends or one instructional program ends, uh, there will be a complement of traffic, uh, entering at the same time. On Saturday, we would expect the facility to be busier. And, and the projected traffic, again, with the same matrix of utilization of the building and fields to their maximum capacity, could yield two hundred and twenty-three entering vehicles and one hundred and seventy-three exiting vehicles. So, yes, that's a fair amount of traffic. Um, and we felt it was prudent to study it because this process is, well, not that we expect typical, and I think that's a worthwhile exercise, but what is it under that worst-case? I'll call it best case from Mr. Wilkie's perspective, but worst case in terms of traffic. We then evaluated in that thirty-five to forty-five minute radius the projected direction of travel in the marketing area. And we would expect approximately forty percent of the traffic to exit and go, I'll say, west. A portion of which, and I'm pointing, I don't know the exhibit number, I think it's A1, and I'm, and I'm pointing with the laser to the property in question, forty percent of the site traffic continuing west on Mountain View, with about twenty percent continuing south on Pleasant View, and the remaining continuing to the west on Mountain View. The majority of the traffic, we've anticipated, will continue east towards Route two oh six. Obviously, that is part of the regional highway system. And that will serve a, a majority of the site traffic. Our analysis, uh, assumed that the DOT improvements would be completed, that the bypass would be done, that the, uh, I'll call it, and, and just for the boards and, again, the public's benefits, um, no longer will left turns be permitted northbound on two oh six to directly go west on Mountain View Road. DOT is constructing a reverse, call it a cloverleaf jug handle, um, as part of the bypass project. Um, and, and that has an obvious safety benefit in terms of eliminating left turns with opposing traffic. Um, we have evaluated the projected operations with those improvements in mind under, under two conditions. And those are the conditions we would expect in the future without the site being developed as proposed, and the conditions we would expect, uh, upon hopefully favorable approval of the site, uh, with, with the additional site traffic. And I'm, and I'm pleased to say that as we evaluate sort of that before and after condition, uh, there is one movement, one particular approach that we expect to see a difference attributed to the site. And, and it goes off of the exhibits, but I'll do my best to point again to what I believe is A1.
Okay, we're back, we had a brief technical glitch, it's nine twenty-five. Continue, Mr. Dean.
Thank you. As I was, as explaining, on the approach to Route two oh six, and, and it goes off the page on what I, what I believe is A1. In the future, once the DOT improvements are made, levels of service on Mountain View will actually slightly improve from what is currently D to C. The right turn movement to go south toward Montgomery and Princeton on two oh six will change from level of service C without the site to level of service D, basically back to how we have it today, uh, with the additional site traffic. While that could be remedied by altering the signal timings, because it hasn't even opened yet, it's impossible to predict whether that would be necessary or, uh, for that minor change in level of service. The only other criteria in terms of, uh, level of service pertains to the ability of site traffic to safely enter and exit the subject property. Um, I've, I've sort of done this in reverse in evaluating the off-tract conditions, whi- which we found to have no significant degradation associated with the site. At the site driveway itself, and, and we again did a worst-case ex, exercise, we assumed that the site only had one driveway and that every vehicle entered and exited via the proposed main access on Mountain View Road to the east. Even under that condition, the site traffic would operate at level of service C or B on Saturday, when it's busiest, mostly because of the lighter traffic east-west on Mountain View Road. To the extent we have the alternative access to the county's, call it, uh, driveway, obviously that has the benefit of diluting the traffic at any one location so that the projected conditions would be even better. So we, we did it, uh, again, assuming that, um, all traffic goes out at one location. Um, and I felt that that was conservative, um, again, to answer that sort of "what-if" question. Uh, in terms of the overall site design, uh, you'll, you'll note from Mr. Decker's testimony that the, the site has an unencumbered main access aisle to the easterly side that then leads to perpendicular, call them east-west, parking aisles on the southerly side of the building. Um, and then as one proceeds deeper into the site interior on the eastern side of the inflated structure, we then have a traditional parking aisle with, um, uh, ninety-degree oriented parking spaces. There's full site circulation around the entire building perimeter, which, which makes it easier for guests, but obviously has the benefit for trucks, refuse, and, and most importantly, emergency vehicles. Uh, I've independently reviewed the various turning templates to ensure that, basically, Mr. Decker did his job, and I, I concur. He recognizes the need, uh, for those vehicles and that we can accommodate all, all, all types. In terms of parking, um, you'll note that the applicant has proposed, and I, and I don't recall the exact number, but I believe it's roughly two hundred banked or deferred parking spaces. Um, I, I am a staunch advocate of, uh, listening to a particular end user, and if they don't think they need the parking, um, I don't believe they should be built, but I believe in precautions. And i- in terms of environmental sensitivity, particularly given the site, I think the benefit of not putting additional impervious coverage, not creating additional stormwater runoff, i- is an exercise we should all, all embrace more often. But I believe that if the demand ever exceeded Mr. Wilkie's and Sullivan's expectations, the ability to add those additional spaces, I, I think, always provides, not only the applicant, but the board, a certain level of comfort that, again, for that "what-if" scenario, there is a safeguard in place. Um, in, in looking at the standards that were provided at Health Quest, uh, which is a different facility because they have treadmills and workout equipment, and so there's a much greater density of people in a given building space, that parking was provided at four spaces per thousand. Um, and, and I, and I believe we're right in line with that general, without using the banked or deferred parking. So I'm, I'm very confident that, that there's a sufficient amount, but particularly with the belt and suspenders approach, that, um, those additional spaces could be constructed if ever necessary. The design has provided, been provided at nine by eighteen parking spaces and nine by twenty feet. The biggest passenger vehicle made today is a Chevy Suburban. It's eighteen feet, three inches. So with a three-inch overhang on the sidewalk, literally the width of the curb, even that vehicle fits in a parking space. I don't, I don't see the need for a deeper parking space. There simply aren't vehicles that fit in them or need them. But we've tried to respect the ordinance where, where possible, uh, to, to meet that standard. The narrower aisle widths at twenty-five feet, um, I, I believe are appropriate for parking spaces in general. Thirty feet just adds, in my opinion, more unnecessary blacktop with no perceived benefit. Thirty feet wide is wider than most streets. Um, and, and it's, again, not necessary for low-speed, uh, parking maneuvers. So I would say that the benefits in providing full accessibility, that ninety percent of the parking spaces in New Jersey are nine by eighteen with twenty-four or twenty-five foot aisles, and this comports with that, it would be a design standard with which most motorists are familiar. I think the only other question pertained to, and it, it was reflected in Mr. White's memorandum, about the, the potential need, uh, again, even though we have levels of service C and B, should there ever be some sort of scheduled event where there, where there would be an exodus? Uh, most of the traffic, even by the numbers, is more in and out simultaneously. But the potential to have a desire for police control, um, the vehicle could park in the nearest parking spot, say, in the very southeast corner of the nearest field, and then the police could direct, uh, if that ever became necessary operationally. I don't think we need an additional space that would affect landscaping at the entrance in either location. But that could simply just be an operational practice to cone off that space, to make it reserved i- if that type of control ever became necessary. Um, we did also submit an April eleventh, um, response to Mr. White's memorandum that, uh, just basically discussed, uh, our, how we arrived at the projected trip generation, and a request for a little comparative, uh, level of service table. Uh, there was one question about what happens if the site somehow is done before the Route two oh six bypass? Um, obviously, the signal at Mountain View and two oh six will remain. Um, it has the capacity to accommodate additional traffic, but this facility will not realize the projected volumes, uh, upon opening. And, and so if there is, for whatever reason, a delay with the DOT project, I think it might be six months to a year, but this facility would not be, uh, at its peak operating and marketing penetration to sustain the traffic, um, that we've projected. So I think under that condition, I, I'm confident that because there's still light, it will be a safe and efficient operation. And unless Mr. Fisher has any other questions for me, I think that's all I have.
Nothing further.
Mr. Dean, you spoke about, uh, parking at four spaces per thousand square feet. I'm assuming, you talk about thousands of square, square feet, you're talking about the soft and harsh structures there.
Correct.
How do you account for the field use, then?
That is ancillary, as, as it is at, at Health Quest and Emerald Sky, in that I, I'm looking at a, a facility with a higher density and a slightly different use than what we're proposing. But as far as a recreational complex, I, I do equate it to the, to the building area.
Thank you.
David, anything? Okay. I'll just ask the, the question, the, um... Let's go for our worst-case scenario topics that seem to be always happening.
I can't avoid those, can I?
Yeah, which is good for him, because that means he's busy. Uh, and you have, uh, you know, a, a, a large output of people coming in and out. Uh, and, and the safety, of safety, if you feel is there for people making lefts and across the traffic, and the queue that might back up the, the entrance there.
I think I understand the question. Those events, those large events, and I, I've experienced them elsewhere in the state for, for a variety of, uh, sporting competitions. With, with, I'll say, only three fields, it does, to a degree, limit the number of participants at any one time. Um, I, I've seen lacrosse tournaments with ten, twelve fields in play at one time. That, that's a little different scenario. But in terms of any, we'll say, queuing or backup, it's self, it's completely self-contained within the, within the site. Um, I, I sometimes refer to it as a traffic detention basin in that, um, if, if a team leaves at the same time, there, there may be queuing within the site driveway. I, I can't, uh, dispute that. In, in just looking at our worst-case peak loading, and, and in our report, I've appended a variety of, of worksheets that show the various queuing. It's even at level of service B on Saturday, which would be the busiest, it's, it's one or two cars. And, and that is principally driven by Mountain View Road on Saturday being relatively quiet. And, and I know that's probably a different issue for the people behind me, but in terms of a traffic engineer's perspective, that's a good time to be letting out traffic because it doesn't conflict with significant activity on, on the road itself. So that's why I would expect the queuing to be limited. But by having two driveways, th- that very concern was anticipated by allowing that secondary relief out to the county access.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, if this is the right question for you, but I think as you're driving the main entrance, uh, and then you can park on either the left or the right, right? It's like driving down the aisle.
The, the first, um, let me just refer to... I, I'm referring to A seven, and now I'm focusing on the very easterly driveway. Sixty, a hundred and twenty. Um, in the first, I'd say, close to two hundred feet coming in the driveway, I'm pointing, in between the two detention basins, one A and one B, there, there, there are only two, call it openings, that lead to the east-west aisles. There are no parking spaces at all along the main driveway, all the way up to the third row of east-west parking directly along the southerly side of the inflated building. At that point, which would be probably closer to two hundred and thirty feet, is where the first parking space in the very southeast corner would, would be backing in and out and all along the easterly side of the building. Did that answer your question?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But you're getting there. So right, right in that area, so that's where you can turn left or right into a parking spot, right? Towards the back there.
Towards the back, yes, left or right, correct.
So I think a question might have been raised about, is that wide enough or is it not wide enough? So can you talk to the, the width of that area?
Sure.
And maybe compare it to, say, an aisle in ShopRite?
Sure. Coming in the site itself, we have a fifteen-foot-wide entering aisle, which, which is a little above average. And, and I, I, I don't like to draw the analogy, but we've all, hopefully, driven over the Driscoll Bridge on the Garden State Parkway. Those are about eleven-foot lanes. This is fifteen coming into a site at fifteen or twenty miles an hour. So it's extra wide and generous with an eleven-foot exiting lane to go left and a separate lane to go right. That then tapers down, uh, into the area where people start backing in and out to twenty-five feet. That's, that's a standard road width. It actually exceeds a standard road width. So that allows maneuvering area for someone to back out of a parking space and leave. I don't recall ShopRite's aisles, but I believe the Stop &amp; Shop in and around the Starbucks, tho- those are twenty-fives.
The same thing.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's why I said it's standard perpendicular parking design, nine by eighteen. The, these are a little bit more generous with the twenty-five-foot aisle.
Are you saying there's three lanes, uh, on the entrance, or two lanes coming out and one lane going in?
Correct. Uh, Mr. Decker and I spent some time looking at that, I'm sorry I didn't cover it. Yes, there is a separate lane to go east on Mountain View Road and a separate lane to go west at both locations. So if somebody, for example, was dropping off a child at this, at the proposed facility at Apex and wanted to go to the county ballfields to the west, they didn't have to get back on Mountain View Road, they could... So if somebody, for example, was dropping off a child at this, at the proposed facility at Apex, and wanted to go to the county ballfields to the west, they didn't have to get back on Mountain View Road, they could keep within, call it, the park system. Ten feet, okay. Thank you. I'm told they're ten feet wide, so they're, they're very generous.
Just one other related question. So, you know, there could be some queuing up with traffic, but also teams don't necessarily leave at the exact same time, and there's some overlap. But my question's really about the parking spaces. Since a lot of times teams come, let's say, an hour before a game is scheduled to start, theoretically, you could have double the amount of field participants, like two teams or four teams for one field at the same time, because people come early before a prior game ended. Was the number of parking spots taken, was that taken into consideration for the number of parking spaces?
Yes, I mean, to a certain extent, I have to defer to Mr. Sullivan. But that's, and reflected on the large easterly lawn area, and again, having gone through it myself, yes, those teams do show up sometime in advance for tournaments. Oftentimes, they're there way early, setting up tents, and, you know, it's a very social thing for younger players. So that's why we have the number of parking spaces, is to accommodate that. To a certain degree, during nice weather, when outdoor fields are active, inside won't be as busy. It's just the nature of how sports work. But I, but I, again, can't rule that possibility out. I think from a practical perspective, it's, you know, indoor in the winter and outdoor in the summer.
Yeah, I understand, like, certain games can start at eight o'clock, then ten o'clock, then twelve o'clock. At twelve o'clock, you have teams that'll play the next game, you also have teams still there that are playing the last game.
Correct.
So that requires a lot of parking spaces.
And for that reason, this matrix was developed that looked at the programming capacity for all of the fields with an overage of the incoming teams.
Great, thank you.
Okay, go to public for this one. So we'll start on the left. You put your hand up first. State your name again, please.
Hi, Jean Trujillo, same caveats, Board of Education, the views are my own. I'm just kind of following up on Mr. Wagner's question regarding the, I guess, overage, you know, like how there's overlap between sports teams. You had mentioned earlier, or I think another testimony.
That was Ted's question, I was on that.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It was, whose question? Oh, Mr. Hashtag, okay, so sorry, so sorry. The area of influence was four to six hours for a tournament. So on tournament play days, how do you handle the traffic for, like, a team that might be scheduled to play eight o'clock in the morning, but then their next game is at twelve o'clock? How does the parking spaces work for that?
I'm not sure what your question is asking.
So, so in the previous testimony with operations, the testimony was that for tournaments, that you would have people coming from four to six hours away, so that I would expect, like, on a tournament day, you'd have, like, from eight AM to, say, whatever time in the evening, that the games would be scheduled throughout the day. So you'd have teams coming to play, say, at eight o'clock for their first tournament game, and then maybe staying, you know, skipping, like, you know, the next game, then going to twelve o'clock. They may not leave, since they're four to six hours away, they may just stay.
Sure. For those types of teams and unique circumstances, what we tend to see is more ride-sharing than, say, the Hillsborough residents, where, you know, mom can come in one car, dad can come in the next car, and we see more, you know, two occupant vehicles. Teams that are traveling from greater distances, either rent vans, or you see multiple siblings or multiple teammates in one vehicle. It's just, that's a, that's a long way to go for an entire entourage of soccer kids. So that's what we tend to see more of in ride-sharing, so they require less parking.
Okay, do you have spacing for buses, for example?
No.
So would soccer teams be allowed to come on a charter bus from four to six hours away?
Sure. And the bus wouldn't remain on-site.
It would just drop off them?
Correct.
Got it, okay. So what is your expectation for tournament teams to, like, are you expecting them to stay for longer periods of time?
Well, that was your, your theory.
Right, so my question, so, well, my question is, because we've gone to soccer tournaments, and when we go to soccer tournaments, and our, you know, my son's game is at twelve o'clock, the first game, the second game is at, like, five o'clock, we won't leave this, the field, so we'll stay there. So is there enough parking space to accommodate families who might do that?
Yes.
There is?
Yes.
And how's that calculation done? Is that just a fancy, like?
It's looking, again, at this matrix of, of, literally, hour by hour, looking at cars in, cars out, scheduling of the teams with an overlap, under the assumption that there would be longer-duration events, where we don't have that sort of consistent influx. But again, there would be, for those events, the programming of the operator wouldn't overprogram the building.
Got it.
So that there's enough parking and facilities for those tournaments to accommodate those guests.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know you're itching to come up, Sally.
Sally Triant's, Mountain View Road. You said that you did this traffic study last June and July?
Correct.
All right, I just want to make the comment that since last June and July, the larger number of people competing on those baseball fields has increased. There are many more teams scheduled in there now than there was last year, for one thing. So traffic-wise, I'm not sure that, I personally, going in and out there all the time, agree with that. I think there's been a higher impact.
I kind of need a question, I'm sorry.
Well, my question would be, you did this a year ago, would you take into consideration, maybe recount the cars that are going in, because now there's a higher capacity of teams competing on those fields that are at Mountain View Park?
I don't have a basis to support that assumption. I don't know if, for example, you've done traffic counts to show what occurred in seventeen is different than it is in eighteen. The facilities were there, and whatever was occurring, not only before school let out, but after school let out, which would be peak recreational use, I think we captured that. If I'd done my counts in February, I think everyone in this room would say, well, what relevance is there?
Exactly.
So I think we at least tackled it and approached it during those times where we did anticipate that, that field use. If it's gone up, again, it's April, or now it's May. I just don't know that it's even still the same as it would be during the summer.
Also, do you take into consideration what may occur in the near future, because we're planning, right? What might happen on those fields in the near future from the county prospect? Because originally, I understood there would be other fields built on that, and that would mean more traffic coming out of Mountain View Park as well. Has that been taken into consideration, or do you?
Not by me, no. We don't know, it'd be a guess at this point.
Would we, as a planning board, consider that, when we make decisions as far as road improvements, which I guess is not his area?
That would be dealt with at the time if there were additional, if there were additional site improvements to be dealt with on the site. So if the county decided they were going to build more fields, then that would have to get in consideration when those site improvements got done.
What's the distance also between those two roads and the way people will exit? Where they're coming out of the actual facility and Mountain View Park?
I'm going to point to A7. When you say those two roads, do you mean the site driveway to the east and the county?
Correct, yeah.
Do we know?
Yes.
I think it's four hundred feet. I want to be certain of that before I guess. Do we know?
Please come take a look at that, when cars are coming in and out of the park now, because that's a pretty close area, if cars are going to be exiting huge amounts.
I've gone through that a lot, but it's, there's a lot of streets that are just as close or closer on, like, Ammo Road, for instance, which is a much busier road. So I would think it's probably far enough, but.
What concerns me is when you're exiting huge amounts of people from a tournament.
Right. But I think the fact that the normal traffic going east-west on that road is not that high, it's just the cars going out, that it's a lot easier to exit than, say, going off of Ammo Road, as an example.
It's four hundred and forty feet.
All right.
So, a football field and a half, I mean, it's far away. These aren't driveways on top of one another.
Because it's hard to tell where that is right now. Who will really address how they will clear up the visibility? Because right now, it's not real great to begin with, coming out of Mountain View Park. Who would address that?
Visibility of what? Sorry, I'm not following your point.
Being able to make a turn out of the Mountain View Park right now without this facility functioning is a little bit tricky when people are coming in and people are trying to exit. Who addresses clearing up that front area so there's better visibility?
You mean because there's, like, shrubs and stuff there?
Yeah.
Or because of the site triangle, you mean?
Because of both.
I can address that. Looking east or left from Mountain View Park is all this property, and that will be cleared and replanted with a landscaping plan, with the new planting set far enough back, and what's called a site triangle is shown to allow that clear visibility across the frontage to make it safer. If looking to the west is a concern, I'll, we can coordinate with Mr. White to ensure that clearing is done within the right-of-way. Even though the applicant doesn't control it, we obviously have some exposure by connecting to that. I think it would be a good exercise to revisit that, and it's DPW more than anything else.
It would be much appreciated, because there is a very bad bend right beyond where you can see the visibility right there.
To the left, yes.
Yes. All right. Then the only other question I would have is, how about road improvement? Repaving or whatever on both sides of where that is done? Is that part of the construction of the site, or no?
No.
Why do you think? It would be exactly as is, it wouldn't be anywhere.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, just a point on that. If they damage the road in any way during the construction process, they would be responsible for fixing it.
Anyone else?
But it's not being widened, I just want you to, or redone, that's.
Anyone else on the left for traffic? Anyone on the right for traffic?
John Warren, on 14 Arthur Road, W A R N.
Okay.
Head up, you didn't address the pedestrian walkway at all in the park. How will that work? There's a pedestrian path?
Correct. I'll refer to, and if we refer to the dark brown as the building, in about the midpoint at the main entrance, there is a proposed continuous pedestrian crossing with high-visibility crosswalks that bisect the main parking lot, that then continues southwest and then ties into Mountain View Park.
My more concern is the safety of the exit or entrance in the park that crosses the pedestrian path, so.
I'm not understanding. The pedestrian path ends, yes?
Does the pedestrian walkway, and you're going to have traffic going right across there?
Correct.
So how's that handled?
It's handled with a stop sign at the driveway, and it continues with a crosswalk to extend that path, as it would at, at any normal intersection, that vehicles stop prior to the pedestrian crossing and yield to whomever may be walking along that pathway.
And in previous testimony, I believe it was explained that the design was to come in on the east, we'll call it the east entrance, and the traffic would go along the front of the building, and that would be a drop-off. And I assume that meant that a lot of people would exit from the, I'll say, the westbound or the park side? Is that correct? Like, the traffic flow?
That counterclockwise flow does, it has been designed to facilitate drop-off to the building, that's correct. Obviously, if someone drops off, and they're literally dropping their child off or a participant and exiting the site, then most likely, they would continue out to Mountain View Park and exit. Generally speaking, if a child is dropped off, the parent usually says, I'll drop you off and I'll go park the car and meet you inside. So the whole concept of allowing that drop-off can accommodate both type functions. I don't, I don't know that everyone who drops off will necessarily then immediately exit, but this type of, call it a horseshoe, design does facilitate that.
And then I know it was brought up about the field usage, but it, I'm thinking last July, if you did your study last July, I don't think all seven of the fields were probably active. Do you know what, what fields were active at the time?
I do not, no, I'm sorry.
Just so, Hillsborough Baseball had their full slate of games, all grade levels played at that complex last year. Which is the same intended.
So they were in full, full swing at that point?
Correct, in June and July. Yeah, I don't know when their season ended, but from, you know, April through sometime in July, they were, all their games were at those, at that complex.
Okay. So if my math is maybe right, I think at some point, I think you might have said that there might be as many as five thousand or four thousand if there was a tournament going in and out?
Four thousand people.
For the course of a day.
Cars, during the course of a day.
Nope, that's not cars, that's people. There's a big difference, and that's why sometimes we have to cut that in half or a third.
That's over fourteen hours, right? So, or fifteen?
Over the full day.
Evenly, yeah. If you did it evenly, but I know you had a numbers of about three hundred cars.
In one hour, correct.
One hour, the max hour.
So, again, extrapolate over, and we're not going to be peak every single hour of the day, but that aligns with, with that projection, certainly.
And if the seven fields for this, the county park, would you say that might be another three hundred cars? As max?
Couldn't even guess.
I'm just trying to.
Again, tournaments of use.
Grab the math of all the cars that you could have.
Certainly.
And it comes out higher than some of the numbers in your.
Well, the cars are in, in that study, are incorporated in that, because that study is done during the peak season, when, on that Saturday, or is in there.
Correct. The use of the ball, of the county baseball, call it diamonds, was, and if you recall from my testimony, I talked about ambient or background traffic, whatever was going in and out of there was included in our count. So it's, it's not, we're adding something new to it, it was already there.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brian Jeniton, Brook Drive.
Couple of questions, sir. To begin with, did you do a year-round study, or just the two-month?
Just the two-month.
All right. My concern with that is this. We've established that June and July are peak times to use. Mountain View, however, has had a history of closing during certain times of winter. This is an all-year facility, is it not?
Correct.
So how are you going to deal with the fact that if there's a heavy snowstorm, and there have been, especially last year, Mountain View's been closed several times?
Correct.
How are you dealing with that?
If it's closed, people can't come to the facility.
As in, like, you're going to be shutting down the facility? They're going to be?
Just like any, any place where you can't access.
If it's impassable due to weather, the facility can't open.
Okay.
It's close to everyone.
Okay. My next question then would be this. Are you aware of the fact that there are no shoulders, sidewalks, curbs on this road?
Yes.
Okay. I guess then this would be directed towards the council.
Well, it's to his testimony, so this is your question.
Is anything going to be done to fix the road, obviously?
We just said no, that nobody's, they're not doing any road improvements.
Not by this applicant, no.
In general, would there be, just because we're in walking distance?
Nope.
All right. Why didn't you consider buses?
Insofar as what?
For people coming to your facility.
We hope that they do, we're aware that they're expensive to rent a charter or a coach bus, but we hope that teams, if they do come from a greater distance, will in fact use buses. And that means there are fewer cars parked and necessary with twenty-five, say, children, parents, coaches and the like on a bus. That's better for traffic. Fewer cars, less parking.
I agree, but like, your parking lot is not going to be able to deal with, and how is that going to impact parking if you're putting buses in as well?
Sure. We don't need the parking for cars if people are coming in on buses. From an operational perspective, if the parking is empty and not being used for certain tournaments because they are attracting more buses, my expectation is the buses would be allowed to park, say, on the opposite side of the fields, because the parking spaces would be empty.
All right.
Otherwise, the buses will have to leave the site. There are no provisions to accommodate them on the facility in specific bus parking zones. It's too hard to predict whether teams will or will not use that.
Okay. Every study that you've mentioned, why? Okay. Every study that you've mentioned, like, you know, in Flemington and such, they're all on major roads. Why did you guys choose a road that's fairly feasible road, you know, one that's kind of underdeveloped?
I'm gonna object to the, to Mr. Dean, and, sir, if you're going to testify, which you seemingly are going to be, if you're gonna testify, you need to be sworn in, and you're gonna make yourself accessible to Mr. Fisher and all others as to the basis upon which you're making your conclusions. So, we, we've moved beyond the question of what the, the traffic expert's testimony is, and making conclusory statements and looking based on some form of, so if you wanna be sworn in, we can swear you in, but I'd advise you that Mr. Fisher and I, among others, have the right to question your statements relative to how you're coming up with the information and what the basis of it is, so we can make sure that the record is complete.
And perhaps a more direct question would be, is this road sufficient to handle the proposed traffic in the site?
Is it?
It is.
And, um, wait a second, sorry. Um, I guess my last question would be, you're saying that there's gonna be a fair amount of traffic. I wanna consider emergencies as well. For example, if we need to get an ambulance onto Brook, Tara, et cetera, because the road is mountainside, sorry, Mountain View is on the smaller side, how are we gonna be able to have, like, any sort of, you know, access for emergencies, especially if you're gonna have, like, peak hours traffic?
There's peak hour traffic that uses Mountain View Road today, as I indicated. It, it gets up to be, I think it was 400 vehicles per hour. So the road, I, I liken it to a pipe. It's, it's a certain-sized pipe that's basically carrying a trickle. It has capacity to accommodate a greater flow. I'm not predicting queuing or backups on Mountain View Road associated with this facility or even the county facility in the event of emergency conditions, whether it's on Mountain View or 206, which has a whole lot different traffic characteristic than Mountain View Road. People pull to the side of the road to let the emergency vehicles pass. That's the law in New Jersey. I would expect that to be followed on Mountain View Road as well, but I don't expect there to be a problem on Mountain View Road based on its design and capacity and the traffic we're anticipating for this facility.
Okay.
It won't be gridlocked, it's, it's just not part of that evaluation or projection.
All right. That's all the questions that I have in regards to-
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, last chance. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dean. Thank you for your time.
Chairman.
Yeah. It's now 10 o'clock.
Is there any way we could ask the board to allow us to have Frank Banish, the planner, come up out of order? He is not gonna be available the next meeting. His testimony should be succinct.
How?
How succinct?
How succinct?
Frank?
10 minutes to run.
10 minutes?
It's up to the board.
You're okay? Yes?
Yes.
All right.
Any, any motion?
Any a motion?
Yep. Motion to extend the-
So moved.
New business to 10:30.
Okay. All in favor?
Side.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Bring it on.
All right.
Francis J. Banish, B-A-N-I-S-H.
Mr. Banish, would you give this board the benefit of your qualifications?
I am a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I'm a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. At one point in the past, I assisted with you with Hillsboro's farmland preservation program and some of the planning work you did decades ago. I am a court-appointed master in about 50 cases where I assist the court in mount laurel adjudications.
Well, accept your qualifications. Thank you, Mr. Banish.
And I am really here for a narrow purpose. This is an application, as you've heard, that doesn't need me to justify the use variance or a lot of other variances.
Right.
My testimony's really focused narrowly on the waivers that have been requested here, and I believe between the time that your planner issued his March 15 memorandum and the back-and-forth correspondence by the team and the applicant's engineer, issues that were the subject of those waiver have been refined somewhat, and I'll just speak briefly to what those are. The design waivers related to two things that we heard Mr. Dean talk about, which were the size of the parking stalls and the width of the parking aisles. Frequently, you'll hear it said that the standard parking multiplier is a 60-foot width, which gives you a 24-foot aisle and two 18-foot deep spaces. They've been shown to be effective, as he said, that's pretty much the standard everywhere. What's encouraging in this design is the fact that the aisles are 25 feet, not 24 feet, and the fact that the parking spaces are 10 feet wide, not nine feet wide, means that when kids drag the stuff they're gonna inevitably carry with them, the sports equipment, out of the car, we have a lot less dings on the side doors and a little more maneuvering when they're trying to back out of the spaces. So I don't think you're sacrificing anything. I think your standard is generous, and I think you've heard that it probably exceeds what's required right now with the 10 by 20 spaces. So I don't think that the waiver in any way compromises the site's ability to meet the parking needs that go along with this, as you've heard them testify to, and in fact, that the overall development of the site is enhanced by putting enough pavement on the site and not necessarily putting more than enough in order to accomplish that objective. Another waiver, design waiver, was the, with regard to freestanding signs. At the time that the planner's memorandum was prepared, there were a number of disparities between the sign regulations and what was proposed by the applicant. They included an increase in the size of the building-mounted sign beyond what is permitted, substantially beyond that. That sign standard is 40 square feet for the facade sign, and 90 square feet was previously proposed. In the interim, the applicant has modified that proposal so that it meets the 40-foot square foot requirement. There are two freestanding monument signs requested where only one is permitted. They were previously requested at the size of 48 square feet, where 40 is permitted. The, the waiver relates to the fact that there are still two of them, but neither of them will be larger than the 40-square-foot requirement, and the location of one of those signs at each of the two primary driveways seems to justify the fact that you would have additional identification at the driveway location because of the, the fact that there are those two driveways. The provision of adequate signage to assure efficient travel to and from the site advances a variety of the public purpose objectives of the municipal land use law, and I think is easily justified. In addition, there are submission waivers. One includes the community impact statement, and typically, you're talking about a use that might generate population, onsite population, like a residential neighborhood, and pupils, that would involve some school costs. In this instance, we're talking about no overnight population. There won't be school, the pupils that are generated from this site will already be in Hillsboro, and they'll be coming here for recreation.
And the, just to clarify, Section 18832E, community impact statement, the main focuses are on impact on population, impact on schools, and affordable housing obligations from that?
Correct, and there will be an affordable housing-
A fee.
Fee being paid as part of the, not, commercial development fee will be paid as part of this development.
But this will have no impact on school, children-
Right.
-or population, so.
No, so there really is no impact from population or school pupils to be assessed by this development. I did skip over briefly the design waiver related to exterior materials. You'll see a recitation that says essentially you can't have corrugated aluminum butler buildings, and we don't believe this is anything like that. I do believe that the combination of the use of fenestration, the banding that gives distinctive detail to the building, and the combination of materials will come off as a high-quality product, although it is an engineered building material that's being used in a variety of different ways.
We will have the architect provide extensive testimony with samples at the next hearing, and unfortunately, we had to have Mr. Banish out of order, so.
And I apologize for that. And I believe those are the waivers I needed to testify about.
And just to clarify, this is a permitted use in the zone, correct?
It is.
And there are no variances being sought, correct?
No variances are sought part of this application.
So therefore, the applicant does not have to justify the existence or placement in this zone, this location, correct?
That is correct. I probably have to justify why I'm taking up time here, since if it doesn't have any variant, well, you know that. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
David, you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay. Here's your mic.
Just curious, does that go the sign waiver? Sign review?
There's, no. No, the, the board can-
Okay.
-grant that waiver.
And I, I will note that, because it's out of order, we tend to get the testimony on first, but the architect will testify that we will provide landscaping around the monument signs to the satisfaction of the board professionals.
And I apologize that ordinarily I would go last, having heard all the testimony that you heard at the same time you did. I'm familiar with those details, which is why I could talk about them, but you will hear more next time.
Okay. All right, so any questions public on this testimony on the left? No one? Anyone on the right? No one? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've reached the witching hour, so to speak. So we have the next meeting that we've already pre-scheduled, David, right, for?
Yeah.
Next week, for him?
Yeah, the next meeting may tend, we will have another agenda item, which we, which the chairman agrees we'd like to put on first. The township committee introduced an amendment to the town center ordinance at their last meeting, and have referred it to the planning board to ensure that the board has time to discuss that ordinance. I would suggest we put it on first, and then follow with the continuation of this application.
Okay.
And we only have one witness left, which is the architect, to discuss the architecturals and signage, and that's it.
And that's all, okay. So we can do that. All right, so then we'll have a motion to, to move to a continuance till?
Motion to continue this application till May 10, 2018, at 7:30 PM, or as such time as the board is available to reach the application. No further notice needs to be taken, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Fisher. So as you know, our next scheduled meeting will be May 10 here at 7:30. There will be the continuance of Apex and then that other minor business that we will do first. So all those in public, next, May 10 will be the next chance to hear this, and then we have a business meeting still scheduled for the 24th.
Yes.
Okay, so that will be the next two meetings, and I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we adjourn. 10:10.